All right, good morning. We are here for, actually, we're here for our little discussion before board session. It's been, it's good to see friends that we get to see once a year or even more often, but a lot of good conversations happening. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, October 13th. October already, wow. Fall colors and rain, 2021. It's 9:00 AM, we're here in the Commissioners Boardroom. And as always, we are honored to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have a full agenda today, and I think we have a proclamation that we're going to do, but do we want to do the presentation before the proclamation?
I think so.
I think we do. So, Anne, I saw you, where'd she go? There she is, behind the bear.
I missed the bear, I was the bear there the whole time.
So, Anne, Anne, if you want to, if you want to come up and do your presentation, and then we will do the proclamation, and I know you have another special thing that you want to do. Welcome, by the way.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you again for this opportunity to bring you good news and always ask for your continued support. My name is Anne Kelly. I'm the founder and director of the nonprofit education organization, The Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project, founded in 1997 here in Salem with our public schools. The purpose of an annual proclamation for the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week is to bring about community awareness while providing opportunities to come together in unity for all of our children and families, to take to heart the Purple Hands 14-word pledge, not just for this week, but for a lifetime. Our Oregon governors, Marion County Commissioners, and our Salem-Kaiser School Board and Superintendent provide the same message for all of our citizens every year. Ours is a public health approach to a public health crisis. I want to begin by thanking all of the principals, teachers, counselors, and staff representing all grade levels here in Salem-Kaiser, who put this simple idea into action 24 years ago. From those 20 pioneers, we began a movement from Oregon to all 50 states and 25 foreign countries. In these uncertain and difficult times, we need positive and powerful action now, more than ever. Today, I want to shine a bright light on the amazing partnership our organization has had with the Salem Marion County, Polk Counties Boys and Girls Club since 2002. And it is my sincere honor to introduce Sue Bloom, Chief Executive Officer of our Boys and Girls Club, who's giving her time today to speak to you in support of our efforts to reach thousands of kids and families with our Purple Hands pledge year after year. Sue?
Thank you, Anne. And thank you, Commissioners, for shining a light on the critical work.
Sue, can you just pull that over a little closer?
Okay, thank you. Use my outside voice. So, good gen-
Introduce yourself.
Sue Bloom, CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, serving Marion, Polk, and Salem.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, Commissioners, thank you for shining a light on the critical work of Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting, championed by Anne Kelly, her team, and advocates across our community, our state, and literally across the world. Anne is a force to be reckoned with in spreading the powerful words and peaceful conviction of the Purple Hands pledge. The Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project is an effective tool and key piece of the puzzle for abuse, violence, and suicide prevention education. And as Anne mentioned, the Boys and Girls Club is a proud partner with Anne's work and the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project since 2002, and we continue to be committed for all of our seven clubhouses and the members that we serve participating in Hands and Words Week activities and throughout the year. Thank you.
I would like to start by saying our partnership began, like Sue said and I said, in 2002 with Neil Johnson. Neil was the program director at that time, and I came to him asking if, if he could provide some students who knew what the pledge meant and would be a part of our film that I wanted to produce to engage middle school and high school age students and adults of any age. It was an amazing adventure, and I'm telling you, it's, it's an incredible film. I hope that all of you on the Commission will be able to watch it. Those kids answered four questions, and they're also, South Salem High School kids also represented on this film. Four questions. One, why is this pledge important for you as an individual, for your family, for your community, for your school, for the world? And their answers are not scripted, straight from their heart. With that film, I was, I took that, our kids' voices and faces, to Harvard to a national symposium on children at risk. And it was absolutely incredible, the response I get, I got from, from that national group of people in all professions. So, thank you for that opportunity to share that with you. And Harvard was able to, not able to, awarded the kids who were in that film with a certificate for their national activism in, in ending abuse, violence, and suicide. And you'll see on the picture up there, Neil is standing with the marquee at the Boys and Girls Club for the first-ever Purple Hands pledge party, and that was in 2002. And Neil could not be here today, so he submitted a video of why he felt it was important to get our kids and families involved, so.
I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others. Those are 14 impactful words that mean a lot to me. Good morning, my name is Neil Johnson. I work at WorkSource Oregon, and I partnered with Anne Kelly when I worked at the Boys and Girls Clubs in Salem, Marion, and Polk Counties back in 2002. And I was honored that she reached out to me to see how we could get the Boys and Girls Clubs involved with the Anne's project. What we decided to do is we planned what's called a pledge party for Saturday, October 26, 2002, from 2:00 to 4:00. And we had all kinds of fun activities going on in the arts and crafts room. They were painting, face painting the, the bear on, on the kids' faces. They were taking the, drawing their hands with the pledge. Then we'd take the pledge, go out to where our big banner was, put the Purple Hands up on the wall. They were playing the pool game designed to work around the Purple Hands. Also, there was a hoop shoot with Purple Hands. There was music. "I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others. Don't hurt with your hands, don't hurt with your voice. Take this pledge with your brothers and sisters. I will not use my hands or my words for hurting myself or others." That was a full musical, something that I still remember. Anyway, it was just, we had a good time. And Anne sat down, we had 150 kids in attendance that afternoon, and Anne talked about what's behind the pledge, the purple, the purple hand and the red heart, what that means. And really, it was evident that these kids were involved. And so, you know, to this day, thanks to Sue Bloom and Jody, Kyle Buse over at the Boys and Girls Club, 19 years later, there is still the connectivity where Anne gets over to the Boys and Girls Club and is interacting with our community and talking about this project. And here she is in 50 states, she's in many countries beyond the United States. I just really appreciate her and all of her volunteers and the dedication that she has because, until you went back, when she approached me, you know, it was a year out of 9/11, we were seeing the increase in gun violence in schools, we were seeing the video games were becoming more violent. Specifically, there was a Boys and Girls Club member a few years prior, and on the first day of school, she had gone to the mob pop market over by Highland Elementary, and she was murdered broad daylight by her boyfriend and, in an alleyway. So, this stuff is impactful, and some of the Boys and Girls Club members at that time, they were teenagers, but are in the Power of One video, David specifically, and Juan. I s, I have seen them here recently, in the last year, and they're all very successful, and that is so cool to see. But they, they do a great job in that video, it is a powerful video. And, you know, here we are, 19 years later, and we're dealing with the pandemic, and we're seeing an increase in anxiety amongst our youth, probably amongst adults as well. We're having a lack of resources with being able to access counseling services, they're so hooked up. So, anyway, the isolation from COVID. So, this pledge is just important, is as important now as it will be ever. It's, it's simple, when we repeat something and we believe in it, not only for the youth, but this can be for adults as well. This, this pledge goes deep into families and organizations, and we'd love to see a list of what that looks like. But it works, it may seem simple, but it really does work. And so, for this proclamation on October 17 through the 23rd, it just means a lot to me, and I appreciate Anne's, Anne's work. So, with that, I want to thank you for my time and your time. Have a great one. Thank you.
That was great. Neil, one of the, the Harvard certificate that you see in, up there on the screen, one of the boys opened up and talked about self-harm and suicide, and at the Boys and Girls Club, they got, he got the help that he needed, and he meant, Neil just mentioned him doing well today, successful. So, the next-
I will not use my hand-
I'll give you a couple of our history highlights. Up on, there's a collage up there with many pictures, the Boys and Girls Clubs members and South Salem High School students gathered at the 9/11 Day of Remembrance Ceremony at the Oregon State Capitol in 2002. They also were wonderful cheerleaders, bringing people from all over Salem Center Mall in 2004, when we had a community pledge event, and they literally, you could see the picture on the left, walking around the mall and saying, "Hey, go take the Purple Hands pledge." The other pictures represent just being at the club and all kinds of fun events. You can see on the right-hand side, people taking the pledge, new moms with their babies and seniors, is for all ages. Olga Volencheva, award-winning teacher, she is our Russian Purple Hands Ambassador. She immigrated to Portland in 2005, but on her first visit to the United States, to Oregon, she discovered the Hands, Purple Hands pledge in a school and began emailing me when she returned to Russia with her students, and she has a, a message. But you can see on the right, Neil is standing there with Olga and one of her students, and then two of the girls from the Boys and Girls Club, welcoming Olga and the students with that beautiful poster that they made. And you can see the script on the poster, "Our hands are with yours," across the, it's just a beautiful example of the partnership of the Boys and Girls Club. Now she moved to Oregon, and now she continues to teach the Purple Hands pledge in both English and Russian at Lane Middle School in Portland, Oregon. And here's Olga's message to you.
My name is Olga Volencheva, and I used to be an English language arts teacher in Khabarovsk, sister city of Portland. I toured my Russian students several times to the United States, and during one of my visits to Oregon, I learned about Purple Hands Project, being very impressed by this very, just extraordinary tool of bullying and violence prevention. I introduced it to my students, colleagues, and other schools in Khabarovsk as well. The outcomes of the program was just extraordinary. Teachers, myself, and teachers and myself, noticed the improvement in social climate in the classroom, in social relationships. There were less bullying and violence, and students just began to understand the importance of this program. And so, we, we experienced more positive discipline. Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting is an essential tool, an essential program to prevent bullying, abuse, violence. And my own experience illustrates, illustrates the program's success.
Thank you, Olga, for that, and the next slide.
My name is Olga Volencheva.
And I would like to introduce Jody Loper, Senior Health Services Director, and she's going to tell you what she has been doing all these years. And Purple Hands Bear is our special guest today, too.
She's getting warm in there.
It is.
As Anne introduced me, I'm Jody Loper. I'm the Health and Dental Services Director for the Boys and Girls Club, and this is Daytona, our Purple Bear. She's my granddaughter. She's beautiful in there. She's been the bear for four years now. Prior to that, she was a junior tooth fairy during our back-to-school health fair, and she always said, "I want to be the Purple Bear, I want to be the Purple Bear." Well, she finally got in, so she's been doing a great job. And Anne has been coming and representing Hands during our back-to-school family health fair, where we see just under 3,000 family members in three hours. As you see, it's a little packed since 2009. And every year, we have the opportunity to prepare back-to-school backpacks, and that's the first thing the kids get when they come through the door. And we have put in the pledge, bilingual pledge, into every backpack, and as you see, over the years, including this year, in a drive-through at Blanchett, we have distributed 23,000 flyers with the pledge on it. And so, it's important to us to be able to remind families as, and school kids as they're starting their school year, to be kind to theirself and to others, it's so important. We are planning a big week next week with the Purple Bear. We will be going around to all of our sites and with the pledge, helping the kids do the pledge, trace their hand, Anne presented us with new posters this morning because most all of our sites either have the big banner, at our main branch, we have that big banner, I see it every single day when I go down to administration from the clinic. And then I have posters up in our waiting room for the dental clinic, and all of our clubs have the posters. So, we'll be making sure that those are nice and crisp and putting them up in all of our clubs for the kids. And then we'll top off next week with, on Saturday, having Daytona, the Purple Bear, be present during volleyball games. If anybody's ever had a child play sports at the Boys and Girls Club, you know how crazy it is with people coming and going. So, we'll be there on that Saturday, out, being able to hand out the pledge. And along with that Saturday, we'll also have the honor to be hosting, in partnership with OHA, a vaccination clinic. And so, Daytona, the Purple Bear, just might get vaccinated, who knows? So, it's such simple words with a great impact. And so, it's our pleasure and our honor to be able to spread this with Ms. Kelly, who's just an angel on earth. Thank you for your time.
Oh, Jody, thank you. Your hard work is just so grateful. How many things beyond this program that you do. Play the little video so they can get some live action at the Boys and Girls Club.
Ready, I will not use-
I will not use-
My hands or my words-
My hands or my words-
For hurting myself-
For hurting myself-
Or others-
Or others.
Good job, guys, thank you.
Hundreds come by. Okay, next. Thank you again, Jody. And now, I would like to introduce our Purple Hands pledge ambassador, Purple Hands Bear, Daytona Lewis. Would you please come forward? Can you get up back, Tony? Can you see? You got it? Come and go with me. You can see the pictures of-
She's been advocating around all those pictures.
I know, you can, that is hard and to see. If you can look at, up there, there she is, greeting kids, families, in the last couple of years, as, as the in-person events couldn't happen. So, I would like to present you with this award and show it to everybody on the screen. If I can do this. In appreciation for your extraordinary volunteerism at the Boys and Girls Club, Salem, Marion, and Polk Counties Annual Health and Safety Fair, your joyful embodiment, Purple Hands Bear, inspired countless numbers of children and families to learn the importance of taking the Purple Hands pledge to heart. I proudly give this to you, Daytona Lewis. I don't know if I can have you or not, but I think we're okay with this.
I feel like hugs are a lot.
Y'all are precious.
We're taking a picture with you before we leave.
I was going to ask, I was going to ask.
The proclamation?
Oh yeah, let's do it with the proclamation.
We'll do it with the, you guys take the proclamation on that one hand.
Oh, gosh.
I mean, I'll take all the pictures you want with that bear. I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, I'll have to update my Facebook post.
Thank you.
All right. Anne, thank you. You're finished with your presentation?
Yes, sir, thank you.
So, we'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the proclamation, then we'll read the proclamation and award you with one of those with the bear. Does that sound good?
It sounds great.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a proclamation declaring October 17 through the 23rd, 2021, as National Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week in Marion County.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that is done, and Commissioner, if you want to start the proclamation?
Sure. Before the Board of Commissioners for Marion County, Oregon, in the matter of proclaiming October 17 through the 23rd, 2021, is National Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week in Marion County. Whereas, a community without abuse, violence, and suicide is a dream we all share. And whereas, any form of mistreatment of another is abuse, and all people have the moral and legal right to live free of abuse and violence. And whereas, each of us must come to understand that it is within our personal power to choose not to abuse and violence to resolve conflict. Anne?
Whereas, we recognize that respect for ourselves and others is key to developing healthy relationships at every age and in all circumstances. And whereas, the principle of nonviolent resolution of conflict must be taught to our children and practiced within each of our families. And whereas, verbal and emotional abuse can be just as damaging as physical violence to a person's self-worth, creating scars that are carried for the rest of his or her life. And whereas, verbal abuse such as name-calling, insulting, and belittling frequently escalates into simple force like pushing, grabbing, or slapping. And the worst scenario is the escalation to rage, serious violence, and even murder. Anne?
Whereas, self-harm and suicide must be acknowledged as a serious public health crisis as the number of victims continue to escalate in children, teens, and adults. And whereas, the Commissioners of Marion County, together with the communities around the country and overseas, recognize the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project's Purple Hands pledge is an effective tool in abuse, violence, and suicide prevention education. And whereas, and therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of October 17 through the 23rd, 2021, to be the 24th Annual National Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week in Marion County, and encourage all citizens of Marion County to join hands and hearts to unite as a family and a community to pledge, both privately and publicly, that- Shall we?
Yes.
I will not-
I will not use my hands or my words-
For hurting myself or others.
Dated this date, the 13th of October, 2021. Let's get the bear up here.
Can we go down front, Anne? Will you join us?
Do you want to hold your, I'm going to go just to get rid of one certificate in front of you? Or you want me to hold it?
Sure, I'll hold one.
And then the bear can hold the proclamation and it's a, it's a-
There you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very good.
We'll do, we'll do a couple other pictures, we can do the-
You're going to come up here with us.
Yeah, get in the mail here.
Set this down for a second.
Here, the proclamation, let's see.
So, we can-
Can the bear hold it?
Bear, put your hands out.
It's like those lobster claws, right?
There you go.
We're looking at HB.
From now on, then you can switch to-
Okay.
All right.
Three, two, one, and then put this to-
Okay, now we'll do the pledge.
Oh, oh wait, we want, just before, she wants to take one with the logo, so I'll take another picture of her dash.
Okay.
Three, two, one.
Okay, now we'll do the pledge.
Oh, wait, we want, just before, she wants to take one with the logo. So I'll take another picture of her, Dash.
Okay.
Three, two, one. And then just put your hands up.
Okay.
Okay. Three, two...
Okay, and we're gonna do it all over for you. Pretty did you get it?
Just the first one.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, here, don't make me hear all those back. Follow me this way. I used to...
Thanks, Charlie.
And I was the...I know how this is.
I'm gonna mention the I Respect.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, perfect.
All right. So Anne, before you leave, I wanted to say on the record that what you do is amazing, the work. And, you know, I've been here seven and a half years, I think it is now, and every year to have you come with students and today with the bear is just really great. And we thank you. And I know I make a mistake all the time, and not all the time, but using my words. Unfortunately, I've never used my hands, but words. And so this reminds me that I need to be careful of that. And yesterday, we had a presentation at our Public Safety Coordinating Council, and I would encourage, and I think you will, and Sue reach out, or Sue already has, with the Liberty House and Allison Kelly. And we had a presentation from Allison on the...
I Respect and Protect.
I Respect and Protect campaign that they're working on. And it's, you know, the cellphone use and the sexting and those things that are causing kids to feel bad about themselves. And so I think this and that are really two good programs that if we can get the word out into our students and parents, it's gonna make a big difference in saving kids' self-esteem in their lives. So thank you for what you do. We really appreciate Boys and Girls Club and you and all the volunteers that serve our youth in Marion County and beyond. So thank you.
Thank you. And this pledge is to be repeated for all ages. We're not perfect. We're human. And so, yes, we forget sometimes and say things that we didn't, shouldn't say. But it's about starting over again every time. So it's something for every age from three to 103.
Yeah.
And so, and we do work in partnership with everyone who's doing their very best to create the social change we need to see. And that's why we're here every year. And as long as I live, we're gonna keep promoting and joining with other partners. But I cannot tell you how important the Boys and Girls Club are to us and what they've done. So again, thank you all for your continued support.
Commissioner.
I have a couple questions for you, and don't run off because I want to make a comment about the Boys and Girls Club. The video, the film that you referenced, it's on a DVD. Is it on your website?
It is not.
It's not.
It is not. It's powerful to watch because it's the reality we're talking about.
I just wanted to share it.
Yes.
So if there's a way, so I, people don't really watch DVDs, but if I can get it on my social media network, I can put it out there. And so I don't know how to, if you can find a way to get it on your website, then we can share that link. There's not, heads nodding behind you.
I would like to explain why it is not on our website.
Okay.
Because it is so powerful, it's hard to watch. And it needs to have a disclaimer every time you show it to anyone. It's hard to work, watch. There's a chilling 911 call on the film. Interspersed with the students testimonials about the importance of the pledge are real footage of pictures and scenes that I don't want anybody to come across that without having, knowing first. Everybody needs to be aware of the problems so we can talk about the problems. And that's what the pledge does, open up those doors for very scary conversations that need to be had in the right setting and age appropriately.
Okay.
So that's why it's not there.
I think she was gonna leave, did you leave the DVD?
Yes, we're gonna leave that with you.
Yeah, did you leave it with Brenda? I know I couldn't watch it either on my equipment.
We don't have a DVD player.
On my equipment here.
If you can take it home, maybe.
We're behind in technology at the county. We actually moved on to, I don't know, whatever. But I do have a DVD player at home that I can watch it on.
Please take it and share it because it is, I am so proud of that film.
So you get it back.
And then the next thing is, I just want to say on the record that if you want to learn more about their project, you can visit handsproject.org. And can you buy swag on your website?
Sorry?
Swag, like your hoodies and so forth. I just really think Marion County should be colored in purple for all the days to come. So that's why I bring that up. And then I also just want to say, because Sue is here, the Civil War auction is coming up, which is a, which is a support of the Boys and Girls Club. It's my most favorite event of the year, so come, all beavers, one and all. And buy tickets, and let's blow the ducks out of the water and really make an impact in our community for our kids. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other commissioners, or I said most of it, I just want to say thank you, Sue, and thank you, Anne, for your continued work on this. This is, this is a tireless effort.
And to help, to work with you all, so thank you so much.
Thanks for being here.
Great. And if you leave that DVD a little bit longer with Brenda, we'll make sure we get a chance to watch it. Thank you.
You can keep it and pass it around.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sure. I remember in Another Life, I used to wear a Vippe Bunny costume once in a while.
A what?
That's my response too, Commissioner.
A what?
A what?
Yeah, some of the older people in this room probably remember Vipps.
Is that like the Velveteen Rabbit?
It was, it was Vipps Restaurants, and Vippe Bunny was the mascot.
Vippe Bunny.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's Another Life story. There's probably pictures that would surface someplace around about that.
Good old Vippe Bunny.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
It got me into some Oregon State basketball games that, when I was a student. Yeah, it was pretty cool. Okay. We can move on to our wildfire. Are we ready for that, Brenda? Wildfire presentation? Scott, oh, wait. Scott, just a minute. Public, yeah, you can go ahead and sit down. Does Nony sign up for public comment? None. All right. We have nobody signed up for public comment. Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Vice Chair, thank you so much for keeping me on task.
I mean, thank you, Jane. Our lawyer over here is passing the news.
Well, yeah, but I'll just...
Just like a telephone.
Don't get, don't, don't give counsel anymore. Come on. All right, Scott, we're here, listen to your presentation.
Yeah, so Scott McFlair, Long-Term Disaster Recovery Manager, wildfire report number nine. And today you have an extra added bonus. When I get done with my presentation, I'm gonna bring up Kevin Dial, who's the new director for the LTRG, Long-Term Recovery Group. So he's gonna make a couple comments.
I feel like you should fall for the ceiling. I'm just sitting.
It's pretty cool. You know, it's not as good as a bear, but, you know.
Wow. I don't know. I mean, would you sit down, seven, you might, there might be pairs.
Yes, and now we're in 13 months after the fire, and building permits continue to move along. So now we're up to almost 40% of building permits. Things are jumping nicely there. Septics up over 50% now, so 53, obviously the leading edge of getting progress done. Then cleanups, the cleanup numbers didn't change with the switch and how ODOT's contractors were not getting current information. So we're gonna have to get that hopefully cleaned up in the future so we can get you good information. Hazard tree removal, we have to check those numbers too because the total number went down for some reason and the, how much they're doing went up. So it looks nice to have up to 72%, but I'd probably make a little questionable note on some of those. Activities going on, county-led projects, the financial needs analysis, that's the folks that are helping Gates in Detroit with their books. They're focused on Gates right now. They're going through to a new software program. So they're getting all their ledgers, chart of accounts, getting them set up to do that conversion. The communications and outreach team, working really heavily on the SaniamRecovery.org website. That's being reviewed right now by the PR Communications Committee for the Long-Term Recovery Group. They also advise the LTRG on its communication plan. And we actually have a first recovery newsletter, almost complete. That should be actually going out this week or next. Economic Opportunities Analysis, they're focusing on, they got the economic baseline complete. So basically, what was the economy before the fire? And then we use some of their data, some of their preliminary data when we did the Detroit's and Gates' visioning sessions. And then they're taking observations that they've gathered from the open houses to inform how they go forward with their financial projections. In the housing area, you heard a presentation most recently on North Saniam State Park and Gates temporary housing sites. We actually have the contract award from the state on that. So that is a very good capstone there. We gave feedback on state agencies are developing programs that help folks with fire hardening and then energy efficiency measures. And so we just talked through how to roll that program out. That's being designed by the state as we speak, but nice new program for folks that are rebuilding in the wildfire areas. The disaster case managers in Marion County are working with rentals, renters, in a soon-to-be-close temporary RV park in Mill City. So they got folks trying to work with those folks. The health impact assessment, they developed a survey that folks will be able to take online or on your phone about kind of the various health impacts. And they're working to get up focus groups on that same topic. Then the visioning sessions, well-attended, the community meetings in Gates and Detroit. And they took initial ideas that they got from interviews, kind of road-tested those, let people vote on them, had new ideas. One note I want to make from Better City, very adaptable folks, they set up, and you were supposed to be able to do it either online at Gates or in the building. And the internet connection went down in the church. And so they, we lost a bunch of people that were actually waiting to do, that wanted to participate. One of our consultants just started walking back from the church toward Gates until they got a Wi-Fi signal on the side of the road, logged everybody in and had their discussion standing on the side of the road. So that's like a pretty good level of adaptability there. But got that done. And those are actually posted right now on the two websites. So Gates and Detroit have those. So if somebody wanted to see what the results were or even take the survey, they can still do that. Then other progress points, we have a support staff from FEMA working on an overall narrative for the recovery efforts. And then we're working on developing a grant that would basically weave together current activities, all the things that are gonna come out of the plans that we're working on right now, and then kind of draw that into a broader plan that would go multi-year into the future. It's a technical assistance grant that then they basically assign a consulting team to help you with that project. The LTRG, we've got a, kind of a shared well system that's an interesting kind of nuance. We had folks that run a community well or a shared well. Some were impacted by the fire, some weren't. They had a system that had some issues in the first place, even before the fire, but we're trying to work through getting folks involved to help on that. We're also developing the plan for the renters into our temporary housing sites, trying to figure out a criteria, how that's gonna work. Case management, actually with the new people, they're starting to reduce caseloads, so that's a nice thing. And then actually closing out some cases. And mentioned the communications and outreach plan. The group got together and really quickly have a really nice plan rolled out. They're gonna be hitting, you know, your print media, social media, radio, you know, they're really have a nice plan. I think they're gonna start working that pretty soon. City of Detroit, big one, got FEMA approval for all the components of their water system rebuild. They said that was a heck of a good effort on the part of Chris Epley and the engineering firm to actually get that work done. They said that was really good. They went really above and had a lot of unique nuances on what their needs were on that system, and that was, that was a big win. Gates, just note they're applying for funding. They've got their water treatment plant has, potentially could be a slight issue. And so they're applying for money to stabilize that and then also getting a backup generator. And with that sets tail into my report, any questions for me? Okay, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and bring up Kevin, and he'll make some comments.
Yeah, Scott, before we introduce Kevin, I did receive, I think it was last week or eight, four. I just want to say this about FEMA. I received a phone call and an email from FEMA to follow up with my claim that I made back in whenever, I see what, September, October, just to make sure that I was being taken care of and there. Of course, I had nothing with FEMA, but I, you know, because of, they told you to file a claim or whatever, but I haven't had a chance to say thank you to FEMA that they're making those follow-up calls.
That's interesting.
You been hearing about that?
No, and I haven't received one. So we all, everybody that was up there was asked to file.
Yeah, and you filed?
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe it'll come.
That's interesting. Yeah, they, somebody called and said, this was your claim number? I didn't call back, and I did, it's always, you always wonder, this is the IRS, and if you don't do this, you're gonna go to jail, right? So, so I didn't call back, and it could have been something like that, but they gave me the claim number, and I didn't write it down and to cross-check it, but...
Well, it's interesting, and I could even see maybe if they're doing that kind of on more of a random basis, almost like, you know, customer service, you just check in with...
Could be.
Yeah, calling everyone might be a little bit much.
Could be what it is, yeah. So, thank you.
That's interesting.
Survey to see their results.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, this is Kevin Dial, new recovery manager for the Long-Term Recovery Group.
You just, you don't have to push any buttons, it's just tough.
Okay.
There you go.
Kevin Dial, Salem resident since 2000, came over for a full-time job with the military and retired about four years ago. Was quietly working, not doing much, until I was asked to become a much more involved citizen in the Saniam Canyon. Came on September 20th as the Saniam Canyon Recovery Manager. This is day 18. And I will be assisting the Long-Term Recovery Group as they develop and implement their operational policies, their plans, kind of a single-point source to get all their teams moving in the same direction. Leverage cross-talking, make sure that the committees and teams are all knowing what each other are doing. And I will again work from FEMA to the state, federal agencies, to the state agencies, to county, all the way down to the community groups, making sure that we have a full breadth of information passed and that people are on the same sheet of music and moving in the same direction. I will also resolve conflicts. I'll identify and leverage resources that may or may not be out here. Like Scott said, the PR and communications effort is gonna be the huge push right now. We're a year out, and people have forgot. We need to re-initiate that remembering of why they felt that need to be in the canyon and help the citizens that are there, that are rebuilding right now. A lot of efforts that are out there also need that public awareness so that they can, really, the families are moving in that direction, but we have some teams that are a little soft right now, replacing some of the leadership that's, again, fatigued from a year. So we're moving through some staff turmoil and turnover that long-term teams have kind of dropped off, and we're re-initiating those, getting lifeblood back into them and getting those back stood up and moving in that direction. My real focuses are gonna be building coalitions, building relationships, and I know the relationship I built with Marion County has been exemplary. Your staff has been incredibly supportive. I've had multiple meetings in these 18 days already with your staff, bringing me up to speed, 13 months behind me that of information I don't know. And it's been running at full tilt. So really appreciate Scott and Matt and Jan and the rest of the team that you guys have got here. They've really been helpful. My information, I am at KDial@SaniamRecovery.org, and my phone number is 503-897-0701. Anybody that's watching and wants to volunteer in the canyon, we are taking applications and we have a place for everybody. So lots of shovels, lots of effort, lots of work going on up the canyon still.
Wow.
Wonderful. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you.
And I, I heard you say people fatigued. And I had my interview yesterday with John from FEMA, yeah, just, and that's what I said to him. I go, I'm tired. I go, you think about, you think about what? And I see Ryan back there, he's asleep, right? And, no, I mean, no, you think about the staff that, and all we've been doing, whether it's, whether it's our jail or our health department, you know, just since COVID hit and then the wildfires and then the ice storm, and it's just, when you said, I'm here to help rejuvenate, and, and just the way you spoke and the things you're doing, it just got me excited. It helped me not be so tired. And thank you for joining the team. And I'm sure Commissioner Bethel has probably pointed you in a lot of directions already because she's really heavily involved with Matt up and what's going on in the canyon. I just drive it every day and watch what they're doing. I don't do a darn thing, so.
I think the thing that I love that he pointed out, it was really kind of a beg slash voluntold opportunity to get to this position. Deana Ferris and her team on LTRG have been recruiting for quite some time for this position. And there was an interim person who I think is just superb, and she had, she has a greater, like a really kind of cool job that she's been away from. And Matt actually said to me one day, what about Kevin? So in full disclosure, I've known Kevin for a long time. And along with Matt, lawyer, and others, he's a solid partner in crime, a get-to-yes, show up, fully embrace any tragedy or disaster and just get it done. And he didn't say this, but he has extensive experience from military, and his operational ability to come in from a high level and go, here's the gaps, and then really bring then really bring people together is really what's exciting for me to see. And I'm just so grateful that you said yes. And there's so much work to do. And I just, I really believe that you're the perfect person for this job. And I'll be honest, I'm a bit relieved. So thank you for saying yes. And as people get to know you, I believe that the trust that they will form with you will also help alleviate some of their exhaustion and stress. You're gonna do a lot. And I'm just so excited.
The PR effort has been huge, and making reaches across Lynn County, up the canyon, all the station manager, TVs, chambers of commerce. That has been a serious push in the first three and a half weeks, is just getting to know the people, sitting down and having coffee with them, getting to see where they're at, what their real issues are. And Zoom is a great tool, but it really doesn't portray what their real issue. You get to set a cup of coffee with somebody, you know what their real problem is, because they they become emotional. So I'm looking forward to this, and I'm fully vested. And again, I'm an addict volunteer. I can't wait. So.
Well, I, I think I could speak for all the commissioners when I say, whatever we can do to help you be the most successful for this recovery, just ask, and we will arrive.
And I've already seen that Marion County has set a new standard. Some of the people that have been across these other committees that I sit on, and I actually had a meeting with one of the guys from the Methodist Lutheran Association. And he goes, average long-term rebuild, expect 10%. And I said, that's not a target we're shooting for. And we've already exceeded that. So I will just tell you, as an organization, and as a structure and a team that's moving in a direction, it's going the right way, and it's going faster and better than anything else that they've ever seen. So.
Can we get like an official logo somewhere that says the Marion County Way and copyright it? Just start really pushing it out there.
Well, come on, I want to make, just to emphasize, is recovery really is a team effort. There's really two sides of the equation. There's the government side, which was, we've been leading and doing a really good job. That's not enough, and it never would be enough. This is a direct, the LTRG is a FEMA model setup to get people involved. But then there's obviously all the other groups out there, the foundations, the community groups, United Way. If that sector isn't doing things, there's, there's missing needs too. And especially with their focus on really individual needs, really very personal things that people need. You know, our side to a degree is bigger structure, a little bit more long-term. But really, we have everything going in the right direction. I think that's, that's really an element of why things are going well.
Okay, I agree.
I think part of the Marion County model is not getting in the way of the organic work that communities and people do, right? It's in saying that our churches and our small businesses and the families and schools in our community are really the heart, and it's our job to support them, not to co-opt them or block the work that they're doing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, at a year out, when you see 220 members of a church in Kaiser come to the canyon to do work, that is, that community, we are moving in the same direction. And we still see that there's a need for everybody to be on that effort.
Yeah, fabulous.
Great.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Excited. It was a rainy night last night up in the canyon. No mudslides yet. Yay, thank you. Okay. Our consent calendar, I think it's yours, Commissioner.
Is it?
Okay, Mr. Chair, and I move our consent agenda. Under Public Works, approve an order appointing Wayne Rollins as chair and Caitlin Wade as vice chair to the Marion County Parks Commission with terms ending October 13, 2023. Under Tax Office, approve an order advancing tax levies to certain small taxing districts pursuant to ORS 311.392 for the year 2021 to 2022.
I second the motion.
And a motion and second on the consent calendar, any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are you aye?
I'm an aye. I'm sorry.
All right.
It's fair.
Well, it passed without you.
No, I know. It's kind of irrelevant to it, wasn't it?
All right. All right.
Who's sleeping? Maybe not so much.
First, under action, I was just using that as an example. It was a, what do you call it?
Not fair. It wasn't fair, Ryan. It wasn't fair.
He's never sleep.
Or accurate, by the way.
But he's been working hard. I'm sure we're all tired.
Yeah.
Under Clerk's Office, I see Bill there, he's coming up. Consider approval of amendment number two to the Contractor Services with Fluent Automation LLC to add $500,000 for a new contract total of $950,000 to extend the term date to September 29, 2026 for high-speed ballot envelope sorter and scanning system. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Bill Burgess, Marion County Clerk. And thank you for considering the refunding of our ballot sorter and scanner, and now automatic signature checking machinery. We've had it for a little over five years now. And the contract has run out, and we're facing a November election here. So we'd like to continue with using it. And it's been a great help, a great efficiency provider for our staff. In fact, especially during COVID, we're able to function with less people by having this operation going here. And maybe some of you have seen it. Their envelopes, every envelope that comes on an election will go through there at least two times. The first time for initial capture of the image. And then we'll do signature checking. It will do some of the automatic signature checking for us, but not all. It takes the easy ones, and then the hard ones we look at. Then we have to upload the information back into this and run those envelopes through a second time. The second time they go through, the ballot is, the envelope is actually slit open, so that it's ready for our opening and pre-inspection boards to take the envelope apart and and process the ballot. It's really important to know, because of all the things that people have been saying about vote by mail, that in Oregon, our system is so secure that we know that each voter only gets one ballot. That ballot is not counted unless it comes through an approved envelope. If somebody were to just put ballots in a ballot box somewhere, those ballots will not be counted. This has to be done under eyes, under camera, and with multiple parties involved for every ballot that's opened up and every ballot that's counted. And it's a, it's a part of the security that some people just, you know, in the past, maybe haven't understand the folks that say, well, maybe there's bamboo in my ballot, or something like that. But it wouldn't really matter, because it's got to be in the right envelope. But so we're going to be sure that that each voter votes once.
People say there's bamboo in my.
Yes, down in Maricopa County, Arizona, where you saw the people looking at the ballots on fluorescent scan machines, they were looking to see if there's bamboo in the ballots, thinking that maybe that would mean that there were other nonofficial ballots that got into the count there. And they didn't find any, by the way. But that's one, one of the things that they were, one of the, one of the ideas they had that might possibly be a problem. In Oregon, that's not a problem, again, because of the way we handle the envelopes. Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I have a few questions. One, I understand that you have an election coming up this month, and this software or machine or whatever it is is necessary. Why did you wait so long? And did this go through a proper RFP process?
No, no, this went through, yeah, sorry, Commissioner. It did go through an RFP process over five years ago, when we got the machine and brought it in. The, we realized in September that the, that the contract was running out, and the process to, to update the contract takes a little while. And so we had, we had just missed that earlier. And we just, so we had to start the process to, just to renew the contract. We've actually paid on our software and hardware stuff up until the end of this year. But the contract itself had a September, I think, September 29th date. And so that's.
So this contract renewal doesn't actually impact the November election right now? This is for future elections in 2022?
Well, you would have to ask the contract people that, because they feel that, I believe, that since the contract has expired, that it's time to renew the contract before we can go forward.
To utilize their services for November, even though it is, is a service delivery date of the end of this year? Jane, I'm confused.
Yeah, it looks like this is a reinstatement of the contract. The contract expired. And so if you look at, I see.
It's on page, page three, first paragraph.
The first thing they're doing is asking to reinstate the contract itself. And so I think the contract includes the operation of this machine.
Yes.
And which would impact the election, I believe, assuming. But yeah, so right now we have an expired contract. So they're trying to reinstate it, and then they want to add services to it. That would probably be forward for future elections.
Yes.
So how, and this is Jane, so my, my experience so far has been anytime we want to purchase something, we have to go through a particular process. And it feels like that process was circumvented in this case. So what makes this special to not have to do a new RFP overall?
So it looks like this contract was entered five years ago, and it expired this year. It looks like there are extensions that are possible on the contract, but we didn't extend it in time. So one of the things that the clerk is asking for is for the board to approve this reinstatement of the existing contract, and then to add these additional services to it.
And that, that prevents, doesn't that process prevent any other vendor on the planet from engaging the, the public process and access to government business?
Not if there's renewals within the contract. So if they had, if they had come to you, like in August, they could have renewed this contract automatically, because of the contract itself that they signed five years ago. This renewal was part of it.
Well, we, we could have renewed it.
Right, that's what it is.
They couldn't have done that.
Right, right. Okay. And then.
But we could have gone for an RFP.
You could have, you could have chosen not to.
Right, we could have chosen not to renew it and had them apply for an RFP.
Yeah. And I don't think, yeah, and that's exactly accurate. So what the contract says is there's optional extensions. And so what the clerk is trying to do here is to exercise those extensions, but the contract has, has run out. So he needs to get it reinstated, and then he's asking you to extend it. And Commissioner Willis is accurate. You don't have to grant that.
So if you look at page seven, number one term, this was the original contract. Contract's effective on the date it's been signed by all parties. The parties may extend the term of the contract, provided the total contract term does not extend beyond 3126. So, so what's happened here is we, we didn't extend it on time. We're asking to reinstate it and then extend it, is what the action is today. Yeah. So.
So why, so I have another question in regards to all this, because I guess I'm hung up on the process and also the access. So I believe that every business should have appropriate provided access unless there's special circumstances or desire, I guess, in your case, for, for something specific. So I guess I'd like for you to share with me why this contract, this vendor is the vendor of choice, and why we need to go through this versus allowing other people to have access.
Sure. A couple of things. Number one, it, it would be a, if we can get use out of this machine, it would be so much less disruptive for us than to bring something new in at this time, when we can keep this one going. Now, there's enough in there in case, because the machine would be 10 years old by the time we're done with this contract. We're asking for enough in case we have to replace parts for this machine. But people have already been trained on it. We know how to use, this has evolved over time. This is actually the one that five Marion County, not Marion County, five counties in Oregon are using right now, at least the vendor. And we have monthly meetings on updates and things like that. And so we're working as a team throughout the state to make sure that we can get the best use out of this particular technology now. Going and building another railroad right now just probably wouldn't make sense. Are there others out there that maybe could do better? Yes, but then they would have to work with the state first. And the state would have to be, have the bandwidth to do it, because there was at one time another manufacturer that wanted to get in. And, and actually, I thought their equipment was better and more sturdy, and more reliable. But the state was not, was not able with their vendor too, Hila Paffker, to do the work that was needed to be done, to work with them to make sure that the interface would work. Because this system has to interface with the Oregon Centralized Voter Registration Election Management System. So it's, it, I guess, in, asking for an extension of the contract is a whole bunch easier and better than, than going around and turning things around again. Especially, we would be a lone wolf if we did that with the other, from the other counties and working with the state. And I'm almost certain the state doesn't have the bandwidth for us to go with another manufacturer at this time.
Hey, Bill, how, so you said five counties use the system. Which counties are they?
Let's see, Jackson County, Deschutes County, Washington County, Multnomah County, and Lane County.
And one of the questions that I have is to Commissioner Bethel's point, this is a five-year extension, but could we do like a two-year extension? And then, and then do a, do a process?
Well, we certainly, we certainly could. But this is, it wouldn't, in this particular case, it really wouldn't make.
That's for 2016.
Sense to, to do that at this time, because we'd just be, if it was a two-year extension, we almost have to get on right away on, on going out for an RFP.
Basically, the decision would be, I want, you know, I want to see what else is out there. I think you can do it in a month, but.
If we did a two-year extension, that would give us time to, at the same time, start, start preparing for a process.
And I, I just want to be clear for, for the public, and also to help for you with my mindset, since I'm new, is the fact that there is other options that are newer, I think, provide opportunities for the public to see that we're constantly trying to keep up a technology and be efficient and secure in our systems. And obviously, elections are a big deal. You, you know better than nobody here that every county and every state is under scrutiny for voter fraud. And I think that it's our responsibility to partner with you to make sure that we have the best voter tracking processing system that we can at all times. And so I'm concerned for a five-year extension, because I believe that technology is evolving, and I don't really like that. I think that we have to do the work, regardless of ease for staff. The staff of this county are the best, and they want to provide the best service. And so I think that they're willing to step up for that.
Can I make a suggestion? There's some other issues with this contract that I want to get into right now. But we don't have to extend it five years. We could extend it another year, right? So Bill can get through his election, or two years, so you get through the general election. Right, Bill? This, this, the way I read this contract, counsel.
Sure. I believe that you could.
It says, may extend, it says, provided that the contract term does not extend beyond 3126. So we could, we could, for purposes, you have an election coming up. And I think Commissioner brings up some, some good points that we may want to put out a request for proposal in the next year or so, to see if there's new technology out there. So, so could we, could we extend this just for two years to get you through the, so that would get you through the 20, so if you, if you go from September of '21 to September of '23?
Mm-hmm. That would get us, at least get us through the.
This next cycle.
This next cycle.
The twenty-two elections.
Right.
And, and you, we could certainly, uh, do that. I don't think that, even though I, 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 there was another system that I preferred at the time, the, the parts that this does to an election, I don't see a whole bunch of changes in the future. It's pretty darn solid in what it, uh, does right now.
It wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt us to find out in, in two years to see if, in, between now and the next two years, to find out if there is anything.
Okay.
That would improve the security and the, the deal. My, my concern, I guess I will bring it up, my concern as I look at this contract, Commissioners didn't even sign it, uh, back in two thousand and sixteen. I don't know how that slipped through the process. And, um, it was signed on September twenty-ninth of two thousand and sixteen. So, uh, there's, there's something going on here that I, I don't feel comfortable extending it to twenty-twenty-six.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wonder if you have a different copy?
Well, it's.
There may be a copy with Commissioner's signature somewhere.
It's written on here as not applicable for all three Commissioners' signatures.
If everyone knew why that would be.
Well, unless we, unless we, unless we suspend it, unless the time there, then it should be on the record someplace. We suspended it and allowed the chief administrative officer to sign without, um, to exceed his authority at that time.
I think it was because it was under five hundred thousand dollars and the chief administrative officer had the authority to sign on anything.
That could be, I don't know if the limits were changed by, since I started in twenty eighteen.
What's the limit now?
It's always been, anything over a hundred goes to you.
That's what I thought, yeah. So, um, I'd be willing, I, the Chair would like to maybe, um, uh, based on your comments and, uh, to extend the contract two years, Bill.
Sure.
What about the money, would you keep the money the same? Because you're adding, the motion is also to add five hundred thousand.
Well, my, my assumption is that that was over a five-year term, so.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, so if you were to just add two hundred thousand, we'd be fine.
Brenda, you ready for this? So, um.
I got it.
You got it?
Yep, Mr. Chair, I move to approve amendment number two to the contract for services with Fluence Automation LLC to add two hundred thousand dollars for a new contract total of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and extend the term date to September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and that, you're, you're moving the amendment as amended?
Yes.
Right.
Thank you.
I think it would be, would it be six fifty?
Huh?
Would it be six fifty?
Oh.
Six fifty.
Yeah.
Original's right here.
Thank you, I apologize for six hundred and fifty thousand.
And I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to add two years to September, uh, twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, two hundred thousand dollars additional to a total of six hundred and fifty thousand. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill, thanks for all of the work.
We'll get to it, thanks. All right. Uh, patiently waiting.
I love.
Not asleep, no.
This is you.
Patiently waiting.
Glad one of us is happy.
All right. We're going to take, uh, one presentation from Ryan on these. This is, uh, regarding our, uh, specialty courts. And, uh, then we'll move, uh, all those motions at once, right after another, all right? Ryan, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, Ryan Matthews, Administrator with Marion County Health and Human Services. And I am here seeking approval of five grants that are from the Criminal Justice Commission. Uh, a D C J C grant support our five specialty courts, which is the Mental Health Court, the Veterans Court, Adult Drug Court, Fostering Attachment Treatment Court, and the Juvenile Drug Court. Uh, these grants are associated with provider agreements that were previously approved, related to the addiction treatment and mental health services that are provided to, uh, individuals enrolled in these programs. As the grant administrator, these, uh, grants are awarded to Marion County Health and Human Services and we are responsible for all the financial reporting, contracting, uh, paying of invoices and all the other sort of administrative functions related to the grant in support of our specialty courts. Um, the, these grants were also approved earlier in the summer by the, uh, Public Safety Coordinating Council. And so it, it's taken a little while for these grants to actually work their way here. We've actually already entered into some of the provider agreements and some of the work has already been happening. But, and that's why these are retroactive to July first. But we're excited to have received these and, uh, I know that we're all very supportive of our specialty courts and the great work that they do and really trying to provide a path for rehabilitation for, for people that are enrolled. And I don't know if there's any specific questions you might have about these, uh, grant awards, but I'm happy to try to answer those.
I don't have any questions, I just would like to comment that I'm grateful for the partnerships and opportunities that our, um, our neighbors have to access this. I think it makes the most sense, I actually had a delightful interaction with a young woman this morning who is a participant and has gone through one of these courts just recently and she just happened to ask me at random, are you, do you work for the county? And she shared her experience and what I took from her is that the, the court she sat in, or went, went through, which was Drug Court, really, really saw her as a person. And the supports that come otherwise through other services in the county and that collaboration have really put her on a track of success. And, um, I just think it's so profound.
Yeah.
It, it just makes such a difference. And I think, I don't know, I don't know if every county in Oregon has these options available.
No.
And, um, I certainly don't think that they operate them the way that we do, the way our team does. And I feel like every time, both you and the Commander here, I keep saying how great you guys are, but I'm gonna keep saying it. You guys do such a great job and I hope that your, your teams know, and I really feel it, I've not, I've not gone over and observed these courts.
You need to.
I do, there's just not enough time in my life. There's just not enough time.
You're not tired.
Uh, but, yeah, thank you for supporting this. And I know that early, this has been a process because there's been some challenges and I just appreciate you sticking with it and, um, getting it here, uh, because I think it's important.
Thank you, yeah, we're, we're definitely happy to support and, and I think that while there are specialty courts in some other counties, not all of them, I think Marion County really does a great job of, of really collaborating across agencies and really setting these up for success, so. And, and I think even just the, the funding model associated with the really robust and high-level grants that we submit that get reviewed through the Public Safety Coordinating Council, I think there's a real process to make sure that we bring whatever resources are needed to set up people for success, so.
Yeah, I, I, I think we have a lot to be grateful for here. You know, the, the system that we have really is a testament to people who came before us and built it, you know? Under Sheriff Wood and, uh, sen, you know, former Senator Jackie Winters and, and Commissioner Carlson. And I think one of the things that I really enjoy about it is seeing, um, kind of the success of it. You know, now we have employees that at one point were involved in criminal justice system or struggled with addiction. I saw Hank posted something that, it, there's something along the lines of some of my favorite people, the people I admire most are folks who are recovering addicts and, um, I just think, you know, regardless of, of the different kinds of challenges we all face, I think I've seen in my life people who overcome great challenges, you know? And, and really reach a place of, of hopelessness and come out of that. Oftentimes do have these just incredible characters and humility and, um, and a lot of those folks work for the county now and, um, provide real wonderful service to other folks in our community. And I think that's, that's something that I'm just grateful for and I wonder at and I, and it's a testament, um, to them and their hard work, but also to, um, our police and our sheriff's deputies and our DAs and our health department and the folks that we usually think of as the, the enforcers, and they are, um, but they're also people that are rooting for the people that oftentimes they're arresting or, or charging. They're doing it from a place of, of hope and, and a desire for, for these folks to succeed. And like Commissioner Bethel said, a, a place of seeing them as people with dignity. And we're not going to allow folks to commit crime or hurt people in our community, but we're also going to root for them. And we're gonna hope that, that, um, they can get on track and, and that we really need them, that they're, they're part of our community and we need them to contribute. And, uh, and I'm going on too long, but this is an aside, I took my daughter to the, the Silverton, uh, parade a little while back and.
The pet parade?
The pet parade. And she saw.
Oh, you were pooping, scooping.
I was pooping, scooping.
Yeah.
And she saw some police officers, you know, along the parade and, and one of them was, was a woman. And she got really excited about that. She was like, I didn't know that girls could be police officers. And I, I said, yeah, and, um, I, I tell you, one of the sheriff's deputies that I really admire is in our parole and probation office. And she helps folks who have done bad things to not do bad things anymore when they come out of jail to, to do good things and to help our community and.
Just be Lieutenant Jefferson.
Uh-huh, and Katrina got really excited about that.
Anna.
Yeah.
Anna, yeah.
Yeah, I spent a day with Anna.
Yeah, she's somebody, isn't she?
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so Katrina now, she runs around and says, I'm going to be a girl sheriff when I grow up.
That's awesome.
That's what she says.
Watch out for her.
That's what she says. Anyway, thanks for indulging me.
Well, I, I, you know, you can't go on too long, that's fine, that's a really, those are really, those are cool things. Yesterday, and Ryan, thank you for your, uh, people taking care of this. And I know this has been an adjustment, how we got here today, um, and making sure that the, the services are provided in the courts. But yesterday at our Public Safety Coordinating Council, we had an update, uh, C J A C from Judge Proll. You know, they give a quarterly update and.
What is C J A C?
It's the Criminal Justice, uh, it's, it's the, it's the defense attorney, the DA, the presiding judge, the sheriff, they meet weekly.
Like an advisory council?
Yeah, on the, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's something in the statute that has to happen.
It looks like it's Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, I had to Google it.
That's it, okay. That's, I thought it was, but I just always call it C J A C because we get a quarterly report and Judge Proll gives this report. And, uh, yesterday, um, amazing, you were just talking about how they work together. And Kevin knows this because, you know, you may have been there still when we talked about this. Were you there when Judge Proll gave her presentation? I mean, they, they work together, they, they have these phone calls and this is, you know, we were, um, um, Council, Councilmember Hoy raised the question about why our case levels were higher than other, even though our case levels on parole and probation are coming down, why are they higher than other, potentially other counties? We're like number two or three in the, in the state. And, you know, anecdotally, Kevin said, you know, we are moving our caseload faster than other counties have been during the pandemic. And they, and Judge Paul describes this situation where they actually use GPOD to hold, um, uh, conferences. What do you call them? Uh, where you, where you solve a case, right? They're moving these cases and they're actually, they, they were trying to figure out where they could do this and they actually used a, a GPOD in our jail to have attorneys come in with their clients, et cetera, and make this stuff happen.
Because of the spacing and all that, because upstairs would be tight.
Yeah, where can we, where can we get stuff done with the DAs and all this stuff? And, and so they're just being so creative, working together, so the sheriff's involved, the judge is involved. Uh, and then they had to run it by the, you know, Chief Justice to make sure they're, they're getting approval. They had some other ideas of what they could do and they, those got nixed, but they ended up settling all these, I forget how many cases she said that they just moved through and got to these settlements on. But it's another example of, I get in these meetings all the time and stuff's going on and I'm going, oh my God, that's amazing that people got together and were that creative to make things happen and be efficient. So, thank you for all the work you do, Ryan, and, uh, I guess we need to move approval of these things.
Okay, um, so there are going to be five separate motions, but I'll just move right through them, huh? All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the incoming, incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission in the amount of two hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred and four dollars to provide support for services in the Marion County Mental Health Court program, retroactive from July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission in the amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars to provide support for services in the Marion County Veterans Court program, retroactive from July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
And motion and a second, any further discussion? I do the day I visited that court.
You were crying, huh?
Yeah, oh my God, it was amazing what was happening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission in the amount of three hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars to provide support for services in the Marion County Adult Drug Court program, retroactive from July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Yeah, Judge Graves got me down there in two thousand and six to see that court go when he, after he started. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents to provide support for services in the Marion County Fostering Attachment Treatment Court program, retroactive from July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, I have not observed that one. Let me know how it goes.
I will.
Okay.
I have a note, I'm doing it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, oh, sorry.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission in the amount of two hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars to provide support for services in the Marion County Juvenile Drug Court program, retroactive, retroactive from July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
And motion is second, another good one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all right. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, Kev, you're up. Commander.
You're so patient, why are we supposed to be at the bottom of the agenda?
Well, they go, they put, she puts it in alphabetical order, one of these days, in fact, I almost did it today. I almost, I, I almost asked to move it up.
Maybe we should do on law enforcement appreciation month, we should add it to the top or something.
We can take it, you know, we can take, as long as we get unanimous consent, we can move anybody anywhere we want.
I mean, he's so patient, maybe he doesn't care, but I feel bad.
You don't want to think they're special though either, you know? I just think we do one, one week we do it alphabetical, the next week we do it backwards alphabetical.
Brenda's gonna kill us.
And then, and then, then it's fair.
He's running the meeting?
Yes, I could do anything I want, but I always listen to Brenda.
I, I'm taking notes because come January, you folks, watch out.
Is that true? Anything that you want, Commissioner?
Knowing her, those notes are gonna be drawn.
You want to be careful setting expectations over there.
Yeah, exactly, okay. We made you wait long enough and now we're making you wait longer.
Yep, sounds good.
All right, so we're here to consider approval of incoming, incoming agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Corrections in the amount of a million, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seventeen dollars to provide funding for addiction treatment for offenders that are at risk of reoffending, retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-one.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Commander Kevin Carvandi, Sheriff's Office, Community Corrections Division. And I know the board's aware of several, our, our division has several funding streams. Uh, in previous presentations, I did comment on one referencing our Measure Fifty-Seven supplemental funding. Well, this is that particular fund. Uh, just for a little bit of background, uh, Measure Fifty-Seven was passed by the voters in two thousand and eight and essentially to increase the sentences of certain drug and property crimes. It also required addiction treatment for offenders of at-risk at reoffending and as well as authorize the State Department of Corrections to make supplemental grants available to counties to address the substance abuse issues. At this one point, roughly one point one million dollars is, is our primary funding stream for our SOAR program. I know the board's very, uh, familiar with SOAR, Student Opportunity for Achieving Results, located on the Chomeka de Campus, implemented in two thousand and ten. Uh, with our collaborative relationship with Marion County Health and Human Services, uh, obviously our office in Chomeka de Community College. Uh, it's an intensive and collaborative twelve-week treatment and reentry program with the goals of reducing future criminal behavior by providing enhanced supervision, alcohol and drug mentoring, employment services and substance abuse treatment for our, our clients. These specific funds, uh, directly support two parole and probation deputies, uh, one community corrections educator, part of a program coordinator, Deb Jardzul, position. And as well as our current MOU that we have with Marion County Health and Human Services uh, that supports one certified alcohol and drug counselor and one certified mentor. By the end of this year, we'll mark twelve years that the program's been around. Uh, I mean, albeit not perfect, uh, the program outcomes do continue to show reductions in recidivism in all the metrics that we, uh, that we've tracked, that we've shared previously with the board. Um, and at the end of the day, the program, the positive outcomes are, are attributed to a very, I guess, evidence-based program design, but phenomenal staff that have, uh, the heart for the work and, uh, just really, uh, work really hard at trying to get our folks on the right track and making better decisions and being productive, uh, members of our community. So, with that, uh, these incoming funds are retroactive from July one, two thousand and twenty-one to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm available for any questions.
So, um, trying to, well, maybe it's a question. Kevin, do you want to just explain why this is retro? why this is retroactive again and highlight that?
You bet. Our funding is for Community Corrections Division and the Sheriff's Office, it's 100% funded by the state, unlike the other divisions, and our funding's also based on a legislatively approved budget, legislative session ended, obviously, the end of June 30th, and our, our funding is based on overall, our overall community corrections funding is the, for this next biennium is $284 million. Our funding is based on formula, on a percentage, and the effective, the effective, I guess, date of the funding technically is July 1st, these contracts, there's a, these contracts carry through through the next biennium. The reason why it's taken so long is that after the legislative session ended, the State Department of Corrections is required to kind of unpack the budget, to figure out the correct allocations per the county, and so it takes a little bit of time to get the IGAs in place, and, and I know I was here two weeks ago pushing forward our, our state plan before the board, and that was just kind of the first step in the right direction, that was the main grant aid funding for community corrections, and we have three that kind of tricked land, this is one of the three, which is Measure 57. The next is, I think, our Family Sentencing Alternative Program contract with DOC, so.
Yeah, in, in this, page three, it says this agreement is written by the State of Oregon in line with their fiscal biennium, and the agreement was received from the state on September 17th, 2021, so that's when we get it, even though you're continuing to spend this, to do these, this program, and it's no, no different than a school that, you know, doesn't receive their actual agreement with the state.
And we technically, we received our first check, we get paid on a quarterly basis, so the first check we received was within the first month of July called a continuing resolution, so we did receive our first check, the sec, but to move forward, that's where we need the state plan in place.
The contract.
Exactly.
Right. Yep, so just wanted to make sure that was understood, so.
Okay, okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve incoming funds in our governmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Corrections in the amount of $1,138,017 to provide funding for addiction treatment for offenders that are at risk for reoffending, retroactive from July 1, 2021 through June 30th, 2023.
And I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Kevin, thank you, thanks for your patience today and all your work. Seen you a lot lately, is, is your, like, do you get it like a-
It's tapered off.
Okay, all right, yeah, go back to doing the real work?
We're almost there, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, your house is coming along, by the way, it looked good.
It is, it is, yeah, the first level looks like they got started.
Yeah, it's nice.
Yay.
All right, since I wasn't here last week, I don't think I read the calendar, so why don't I read it?
Okay.
All right, then you guys can sign. Okay, we're here for our board session. Later today at 1:15, Board of Commissioners, Chief Administrative Officer, Executive Session if needed, location here in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor. Also today at 2:00 PM, a work session on homelessness update in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor. Today at, excuse me, Thursday, the 14th, 7:30 AM Kaiser Marion County Meeting at Sherry's on River Road in Kaiser. Also on Thursday, the 14th, at 10:00 AM, a work session with Oregon Garden, location in the Commissioners' Boardroom here on the fifth floor. On Monday, the 18th, 11:30 AM, a Safe Ag Harvest Celebration Luncheon, location in the Salem Convention Center at 200 Commercial Street Southeast. That'll be my first event that I've gone back to the convention center, no, you've, you guys have, I think, both been there.
I'm super excited for this.
It's not, it's not a dinner, though.
It's not, I was just gonna say, I'm equally disappointed that this is not a dinner, 'cause it's my favorite dinner of the industry, 'cause Boys and Girls Club Civil War is like the thing.
I remember a dinner there, I was the MC, and I made the-
Where are you?
I made the top fold, the bottom fold, and the opinion piece.
You told me about that.
All right.
That's not all, well, you know.
Well, I don't know, it's never happened in my political career before.
What do they say, the Chinese curse may live in interesting times?
Yeah, you know? All right, but I did see, what I started to say was, I saw there, there, on the way in this morning, they had an ad right there as you come down the hill on 22, that, welcome back at the convention center, Salem Convention Center, so, that's what I was getting to, and I got way off. On Tuesday at 9:30, management update here in, on the fifth floor in the Commissioners' Boardroom. On Tuesday at 11:00 AM, Marion County Extension 4-H Service District Meeting, Commissioners' Boardroom here on the fifth floor. On Tuesday, the 19th, at 1:30, Health and Human Services Policy Meeting, Commissioners' Boardroom here on the fifth floor. Tuesday, the 19th, at 3:00 PM, Suicide Prevention Training here in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor. On Wednesday, the 20th, we have the, here on the CH2, or whatever you call this building, the United Way Breakfast and the Commissioners' Boardroom-
Courthouse Square.
Courthouse Square, and the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor to raise money for the United Way. On Wednesday, the 20th, at 9:00 AM, board session back here in the Senator Hearing Room. On Wednesday, the 20th, at 1:00 PM, work session, American Rescue Plan Act funding, Commissioners' Boardroom here on the fifth floor. On Wednesday, the 20th, at 4:00 PM, FEMA local briefing for, FEMA briefing for local officials, Commissioners' Boardroom. Okay, good, what's new?
I'm exhausted. Is that new?
That's not new, that's a state of life as a commissioner.
Oh my gosh, I had a delightful conversation with a youth yesterday, and he asked me, "What's the most surprising experience that you've had or thoughts that you've had as being a commissioner?"
That's a good one, question.
And I, I think about it for a second, and then I, what I've come up with is, I've had a lot of really great jobs, but this is probably the most emotionally connected position I've ever had. What I didn't realize before, that I very much understand deeply now, is that we can absolutely be present for our citizens, and this position supports, and our relationship together as commissioners and kind of the philosophy of the county really supports our ability to engage people. They engage us every day, right? We get emails and calls, but we have such an opportunity to really connect and build those personal, one-off relationships, and there's like 350,000 people in this county, and Commissioner Willis teases me all the time that I want to know everybody, and that's true, and maybe by the time I'm done in four years-
You will.
-or whatever that looks like, I might know all 350,000 people, because I feel like every day I meet with one or more person.
It'll be 370 by then.
Bill's clapping. But it is just the most emotionally connected position ever, and maybe because of the pandemic and the wildfires and the ice storm and my heart to just want to hug everybody, Matt teases me that if I could just hug the world, I would, and he's not wrong, but putting yourself out there, like, we all do, we all really put ourselves out there, and so as I was explaining this to him, he was like, huh, and I just didn't think, I didn't know before, A, that it would be this much work, so much work, but B, that it would be so endearing to me, everything that we do. I mean, everything that we do, I talked to a lady the other day about her trash, she's frustrated about the county and some things, and she was so invested in it, and it was difficult for me not to kind of invest with her in this conversation about trash. We got it solved, but still, so, that's, that's my share for the day.
Yeah, when it works well, it's really wonderful, you know, and-
Yeah.
It's a, like I said before, it's a testament to the people that have gone before us and have sort of built that trust, and, and we maintain it. I mean, one of the things that I find really humbling is when people come to us with challenges or frustrations, but they do it in a way that's constructive, where they, they have this expectation of like, we're, the Commissioners are good people, if I tell them what I'm struggling with, they'll help me navigate it, and they'll help, you know, solve the problem, and I know that we try to do that, but I think in some places, you've seen that trust lost, right? Where folks don't have that expectation that their elected officials are there to help, and so I do see it as sort of a, a fragile thing and a, and an important thing to protect that, that sort of trust and that expectation that we will do our best and we'll give it a go, even if, you know, we may make mistakes or not always get everything right.
Yeah, I-
What was the question, repeat the question he asked you again?
He, he said, "What's the most, what'd he say, what's the most, like, oh, I don't-
It was like surprising, wasn't it surprising?
Did you say rewarding? No, it wasn't rewarding, but like-
Surprising?
Surprising, like, what's the, what's the one thing that I didn't think would exist in this job that does?
That stands out.
Yeah, I'm like, see, I was out, I didn't get home till 11 o'clock last night, 'cause I had a different meeting that went for five hours last night.
You know, the, the, well, the reason I wanted you to repeat the question was because as you were answering that question, I was thinking, in 2005, when I got sworn in at the legislature, I was thinking, oh, good, I get to go in and repeal a whole bunch of laws that don't make any sense, right? Because they were always in the way-
Yeah.
-of business and stuff, but I think the most rewarding thing was, two things, and it's still the same here, is the constituent work that you get to do.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter whether you're in the minority or the majority, you can get things done for your constituents when they're having a problem, you know, you, you, you're able to call the, you know, I'll never forget Todd and Brenda who own the window wash, ABC Window Washing, and we were working on reentry stuff and, you know, encouraging people to hire people that are coming out, just like we do still today, and I'll never forget, Todd got the bid on cleaning the windows with DAS in the government buildings, and he goes, "They rejected my contract because I had this guy who had, had a felony on his record that was running his business for him," and I remember calling DAS and having him in my office, and, well, we got that solved, right? I mean, it was, it was like, just, those types of things that you can get done for, the unfortunate thing is, is a lot of people don't realize that they can make that call-
Right.
-and get things done, but that is very rewarding, the constituent work that we get to do even here today, and i- it's magnified, because now it's a pothole, or it's-
Yeah.
It's easier as a commissioner than as a state legislator.
You know, we, we do so much more.
Well, it's easier to get things done, 'cause there's less of us to collaborate and decide, that's a benefit.
And then, the second, the second thing that, that I don't know that I, that it's a surprise or a shock, but when you look, when you're outside and you look inside in today's political world, you think, gosh, they, they hate each other, they don't get along, and all that stuff. The other thing that, that I really appreciate even today is that we just can put all that stuff aside and get things done, and here at the local level, we get, we get things done, whether it's working with the city of Salem or other cities around the county, even going down to the Capitol, as, as hard as it has been, still getting things done with people because we have relationships and respect for each other in those relationships, and so, that's, that's the, the two things that I think of when I answer that question, it's like, yeah, it's, it's better than what you think it is.
It's, yeah, but it is exhausting.
Until you get there.
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, sometimes I struggle with, there are communities that aren't as healthy as ours, and sometimes they're overrepresented in the legislature, and, you know, we can be respectful and helpful, but that doesn't mean that the other folks always are, right?
Oh, yeah.
And so I think, you know, protecting our community from some of the problems that frankly kind of get exported to us from other places, I think, is an important job that we have as well.